So hello, everybody, and welcome to our daytime meeting. Clerk, will you call the roll? Agent.
Mike.
Here.
Hallie Burton.
Here.
Sanchez.
Here.
Willetts.
Woodings.
Here.
Four present, two absent. Thanks. First up, we have a request for approval of council minutes from our work session and evening meeting of December 6.
Madam Mayor, I move approval of the city council minutes from the work session at regular evening meeting of December 6, 2022.
Second. You have a motion, a second. Clerk, will you call the roll? Leg.
Yes.
Hallie Burton.
Yes.
Sanchez.
Yes.
Woodings.
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries. Going to move into special business. We have one item to add, but first I'll entertain a motion for the appointment of Dennis Fox to the Plumbing Mechanical and Fuel Gas Board.
Madam Mayor, shall I do an unanimous consent?
Yeah.
Ask unanimous consent to appoint Dennis Fox to the Plumbing Mechanical and Fuel Gas Board for a four-year term ending December 2026.
Without objection. And is Dennis here?
Ready.
Would you like to say hello? You're welcome to come up. You don't have to, but.
I just appreciate the opportunity and looking forward to helping out any way I can.
Well, thanks so much for your service. Really appreciate it.
Thank you. You know, Madam Mayor, I read Dennis's resume, and we get such great people for these positions, and thank you for stepping up. You have a great resume for this position.
And now, before we head to item two, Chief Bowlin is here. He's going to present the Executive Fire Officer Certificate to Chief Hummel. And I'll let you explain the completion of the four-year program. Yes, please.
Good afternoon.
I don't think it's on. How about you want to come over here?
There we go. Green means on.
Great.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, City Council members. Again, my name is Chief Bowlin. I serve as the Assistant Chief on our executive team. Thank you for a moment today. I'd like to present some recognition to one of our team members and one of our leaders within our organization. Chief Hummel has most recently completed the Executive Fire Officers Program, which is a four-year graduate degree from the National Fire Academy. I'd like to invite you to come up, Chief Hummel, present you with your certificate, and recognize this accomplishment. And I would offer, if there's any questions, but I'd also offer the mic to you to describe some of the challenges during the pandemic and completing this program.
Madam Mayor, Members of the Council, thank you. Well, yeah, it was a challenge. It's supposed to be a four-year program, and it ended being five and a half with COVID. And we ended up having to instead of do two-week on-campus, two of the four years, we ended up having to do more of a three-month. All the supplemental assignments you would have been doing in person, you had to do in addition to your normal daily work. And then you still had to do your, you know, your research papers each year that you were given six months to complete. So it was a challenge, really. Some of the credit goes to my family and my wife and my children for putting up with cranky dad, having all the extra work. But yeah, thank you.
Thank you very much. Would you join me in acknowledging him?
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Quick comment.
Go ahead.
One, I just think it's so awesome that when people go on and they engage in professional development to become better at their job for themselves. But the great part about it is it always has an impact on every other person around you, and any organization knows that really well. So just like to commend you and both and the Fire Department as well for that investment. And I'm really excited to see how that pays off for the rest of the people that you work with. Congratulations.
Madam Mayor, thank you. Aaron Hummel was one of the first firefighters I met before I got elected. Already then working to make the Fire Department a better place and to make the fire service more productive for the citizens of Boise. It's so great to see you take this step. Thank you for all the hard work.
Madam Mayor, congratulations, Chief Hummel. I had the distinct pleasure of addressing new graduates and being able to listen to Chief Hummel, who is an amazing public speaker and very inspiring to the rest of the folks at BFD. Thank you for leading the way by pursuing professional development, and congratulations on doing this very hard work during an incredibly difficult time. Congratulations.
All right. We have another fire item now, and this is the 2022 Light My Fire Donation Check presentation with Division Chief Isz Buzonyo here? Somebody else from Fire standing in? Oh, hello there. How are you?
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor. My name is Captain Roy Beam. I'm a senior captain with Boise Fire Department. Probably. And my job is to stand in Chief Buzonyo's place. He's apologized he couldn't make it. He's coming from me as we speak. And we may hear the squeal of his sirens as he comes into the garage. But I am here to introduce the Light My Fire Committee. And the most important thing that you understand that this is a very fun activity for you guys, and please feel free to enjoy. Mary Calhoun, if you would bring up your group. The Light My Fire Committee works diligently to provide funds for our fire prevention program and also our Union Firefighters Burnout Fund, where we provide funds directly to victims of the fires. Mary?
Thank you. So today is a fantastic day for us with the Light My Fire Committee. This is a time where competitors lay their lances down to do something bigger and greater for the community, for people that are burnt out of their home, that run out in the middle of the night. And firefighters used to have to pull money out of their back pockets. What do they do with them, right? And so a portion of what we do is to help those people that are struggling in the middle of the night with shoes or no shoes or whatever, to be able to help them. Twenty-eight years ago, this thing got started. Bob Ricketts, right here, is the grandfather of this whole thing, been here from the very beginning with Ricketson Associates. We also have Andrea Bradshaw with Belfour, with Kailin Cooper. Also Logan with CTR and Sarah Morris with Ricketson Associates. So we worked together really hard for several months in order to do this. And in that 28-year time span, over $624,000 has been donated. So it takes a lot to be able to sustain something for that period of time. And last year, we did the Ring 20 theme, which was really fun. And because of COVID, we had fewer people, but we were still able to have net proceeds of $67,000. And so today, it's a 60-40 split, so 60% goes to Boise and then 40% to Meridian. We did $26,400 to Meridian, and today we have $40,000. And we're going to do a split. So $20,000 goes to fire prevention and the burnout fund. And that you guys match, so it rolls up to $40,000, which is huge. And then, so I'm going to give that to you, Roy. Fire prevention. And then the other $20,000 goes to fire burnout fund. And so it is just an awesome thing for able for us to be able to do this and bless people in that community at their most vulnerable time. And Roy does a great job, too, and so does Dane. Boom. Oh, we've got invitations for our 2023 event, and we're going to do a Gold Rush theme. So Eureka, we're striking gold for burnout and fire prevention.
Well, thank you. We really appreciate all that you do to build community through these events and then to support your community. And as you say, and as you just said, the impact is real. I mean, I've talked to families that have, you know, found themselves in the unfortunate situation of having had a fire in their home and needing to take advantage of the support that the burnout fund provides. It really does make a difference at one of the toughest times in somebody's life. So thank you and for all that you do to increase the coffers and that to make it possible for us to help more people.
Very good.
What are we?
If you, esteemed ladies and gentlemen, would like to come down and take a picture with us?
Yes.
That would be most wonderful.
Thank you. It's good stuff. It's for people.
Yes.
Yes.
So this is the most smile for her.
Well, I task her. Our pleasure, very much. It's a pleasure to see you. Thank you. You are so welcome. Thank you so much. Yes, you are awesome. Okay, next up, we've got Mike Shurek with our end-of-year report.
Madam Mayor, council members, we have completed our review of fiscal year '22. And today, we have the end-of-year report to present to you. As usually, we have a few slides. You should have received an electronic copy of the report. There's the cover in your packet. I'm going to go through the general fund and then also briefly touch on the enterprise funds and other funds, and also hit a few economic indicators, some highlights. Summing up the general fund, if you look at the income statement, there is a loss. Do not be alarmed. We had a loss last year. There's a lot going on there, and balance sheet adjustments in lead to a positive $4.8 million result. And that is what Eric will be following with end-of-year allocations and IBCs. At a high level, the revenue categories were just slightly above budget. I'll talk to that in a later slide. We've got some things going on. But the takeaway is our revenues were ahead of expectations. We also had significant expense savings of $31.5 million. There's things going on there, too. You're aware. We have a lot of vacancies. We have M&amp;O savings, which includes unused contingency accounts. Supply shortages and some delays are improving, but slowly that's still driving delays and getting things purchased and certain things completed. We also have a lot of rebudgets again this year, which also factors into this. And also, we had one-time savings of $14.5 million we pre-planned in the '23 budget. So this is what we call the I chart. I've taken you through this before, but I'm not planning to today. Just want to show you that it's there on page eight of the report. The right side in green, you can see the revenue variances. When we look at it, that's where we're, you can see those. And then also the expense variances, and then below is the end-of-year adjustments, which arrive at the 4.8 million net result. So focusing in on revenues. Again, our revenues were ahead of expectations. It was driven by three main categories. Sales tax was 4.7 million above budget. We got the full growth in the sales tax formula versus getting limited to 1%. So that was a significant overage for the year. Development fees also well above budget, $4 million. And then departmental revenues were 3.6 million, and that was driven by parks. Also, that was parks revenues, so we're doing better there from the pandemic lows and conservative budgeting. And then there was also a little bit of public safety revenue. Two key revenues were under budget, and one is federal grant revenue. Most of that is ARPA, in what we refer to as federal pandemic grant. And that is due to timing of ARPA. So that's what's driving that variance to budget. And we're rebudgeting that because those programs will be completed. So just, it's a little tricky the way that works. Also, one of the adjustments back on the I chart is we had to take an accounting loss on general fund investments, and it's driven by interest rates going up or down. We have to book that for accounting purposes, but we either subtract it or add it back because it's not something we ever planned to have happen. It is due to the accounting rules. So there is a loss, and you'll see it throughout the report in different areas due to this effect. But it shows up here as well. So it's, it's, it's an accounting loss. It's a paper loss. But the net result was we were slight above budget. But again, the takeaway is our revenues were better than budget based on those first three items. Moving to general fund expenses. There, we were $5.3 million, about 3% below budget. Again, we had a higher vacancy level. $3 million of that was salaries and wages, and that would have been slightly higher if we hadn't done the COLA adjustment, advancing that to July. And then there's about $2 million of healthcare. The rest was retirement and other. Then looking at M&amp;O expenses, that was about $20 million below budget. We have contracted miscellaneous costs, and there we have ARPA costs. Again, that's a large chunk of that, about $5 million. Our operating contingencies, we did not use professional services. And most of those costs are being rebudgeted into '23. And then we have some minor equipment savings, a lot of computers there, which again, we're rebudgeting because we're waiting to get computers purchased, and then some software maintenance costs. The next category is just miscellaneous expenses. We also have a large variance there, $6.8 million. Most of that is VRT grant costs, which again, we are rebudgeting. That's for the State Street corridor. That will be a multi-year project. And then we have some major equipment savings that is due to public safety grants, most of it in police. And then, again, a lot of rebudgets again this year, just with supply chain issues and a lot of projects. And they take longer sometimes, and they're across years. So we have $20.8 million in rebudgets. We also have $5.4 million of revenue rebudgets. That's on page 13 of the report. And the revenue again is due to, due to some ARPA. Then the other thing with the general fund is, as usual, the report on pages 15 to 35 has pages or a little bit more perhaps on the general fund departments. I'm not planning to cover those, but if there are any questions, I would be happy to do my best to answer them.
Madam Mayor, I just want to kind of ask a clarifying question for folks who may not be super familiar with finance. So what you're basically saying is we had some projects that we were not able to complete in FY 2022 that will be completed in FY 2023. And so we're just kind of carrying those funds forward to the coming year so that those projects can be wrapped up?
Madam Mayor, council member, yes, that is what we do. We have something we cannot complete at this year. It is encumbered, or we rebudget the expense planning to do it the next year.
Great. I think this was just a little bit more than what we usually have in that category. So I just wanted to make sure you're super clear with everyone on that. Thank you.
Okay. Moving on to the enterprise funds, I'll briefly try to go through these, give you a sense of what we've seen in our review. I will probably won't hit all the hype, the bullet points here. You will see some themes such as the unrealized accounting loss because these funds have their own cash balances invested. Pension expense adjustments, it's a similar thing, and it's throwing some of these things off. But I will just go through these quickly. So for airport, the first thing there is just the revenue was far above budget. It was more than twice the budget. There was higher user fee revenues, higher grant revenue, and capital revenue. Operating expenditures were actually above budget, but this was, was due to what I just mentioned, the pension expense, depreciation expense. Those are not our typical expenses that we're looking at. They matter. But the rest of their expenses were fine for personnel and M&amp;O. Also, the capital project expense, lots going on at the airport. It amounted to $53.2 million. And just a footnote, since we've run the report, accounting has noticed a couple reconciliations. That number is slightly higher than is what is in the the report. We may be looking to just update that before we put the final version on the website. And we have a similar thing for water renewal fund. Moving to geothermal, the revenue there, slightly below budget, but you'll see the unrealized accounting loss. Their water sales were slightly above budget, so that was good. Operating costs below budget, and it was driven by just lower M&amp;O costs. And there was some capital project expenses here. Some things were done in the capital realm for geothermal. Solid waste fund. Their total revenue was above budget, but again, we have some noise there. Service revenues were slightly under budget, less than a percent. But we had some other things going on, some miscellaneous revenue. And then operating expenditures were below budget. Water renewal fund, their revenue, $80.2 million was above budget. Service revenues were up mainly due to crop revenue. And then capital revenues were also higher. And then again, we have this accounting loss. Operating expenditures were under budget. And here again, you see there's pension liability flowing through personnel, but it was close to budget otherwise. And then we had some M&amp;O cost savings. And here is the other adjustment. The capital and major equipment expense total $28.1 million. We had a slightly lower number in the book of $26.6 million. Moving on to housing, we now are reporting three funds. The first HUD funds is two different funds. Revenue there was under budget. It's due to timing of projects. That's when they recognize revenue. And operating expenditures were also under budget for the same reason. The second housing look now is projects, Special Activities Fund. And what's mostly going on there for last year is the emergency rental assistance. And it's a pass-through, so we have revenue coming in, and it was close to budget. And then most of that expense goes out for the program itself. And then the third one is property management. Rental revenue there was slightly above budget. There was an asset sale, which increased some revenue there. Operating expenditures were slightly below. And then we have fleet. Revenue there slightly below budget, but again, we have this accounting loss. Their internal service revenues were actually above budget. So a lot of demand for their services in the last year. And then operating expenditures, slightly above budget, but again, it was caused by this pension expense. Otherwise, they're fine, and there are just some higher parts costs with more activity. Other funds, we have risk management, workers' comp. That fund revenue is below budget, but again, this accounting loss factors in there. Otherwise, revenue was close. Expenditures above budget. There we have this pension liability adjustment. M&amp;O costs were up, as they have been recent years, significantly due to higher insurance costs. And then the last fund here, before I get to the economic indicators, is the capital fund. The revenues were under budget, primarily due to timing of projects and various transfers we do into the capital fund. There's significant rebudgets there, as there always is, just due to the multi-year nature of projects. And capital expenses were also significantly below, really for the same reason. We have a $40 million rebudget amount for all of that. We are seeing project delays due to supply issues and shortages continue. And we do continue to see just some higher costs, so that is affecting how we're looking at things and what we're rebudgeting and so forth. Last slide is just hitting a few economic indicators. Unemployment is down versus a year ago. The October read was slightly up. We went from 2.3% in September to 2.4% here, the latest read. There was strong job growth in Boise over the last year, 4.8% aided by immigration. And importantly, there was some improvement in labor force participation, something that's been key with the pandemic. Construction development, annual permit volume, it was above 19 pre-pandemic and 20. It was slightly below last year, but still a very strong year in terms of lots of construction development. And development free revenue was much higher, 3.4 million, a new high, 17.8. Sales tax, I mentioned earlier, at the state level, receipts grew almost 13%. Again, that's a very high rate of growth. And then the city received full growth, so instead of 1%, we averaged 23% over what we received the year before. And then the last point is just airport traffic, up significantly, 37% over fiscal year '21. That's the slides I have just to present. I'd be happy to stand for any questions.
Madam Mayor, thanks. I'll kick off with a couple of questions. So the unrealized loss on the investments is primarily due to the inflation. Are we through that? How are we going to handle that next budget year in terms of what we're projecting?
Madam Mayor, council member. Inflation is factoring into interest rates, and what's happening is we are reinvesting money. We are getting a higher interest rate on it. There's more interest. This is really just an accounting loss based on the market value, which is changing with interest rates fluct, interest rate fluctuations. It is not the easiest concept to get. We are not expecting to take that loss. It is just a book loss. We will get the, the interest. And interest revenue was actually, interest revenue was actually above budget. So not sure if I'm asking, answering your question, but.
You did. You stated it better than I did. I just wanted to ensure that next year's budget were accounting for what we saw that created the conditions that required us to take this unrealized loss, even though, even though it's not a real loss. So that, that, I think it is difficult for members of the public to understand. And of course, makes the, the whole budget a little bit
Wonky.
You know, wonky in people's minds. So just wanted a little more explanation. The other two questions I have are one, we had not allocated the money that ended up going to VRT for the State Street. But I guess I wonder why we didn't allocate it in the first place, because I thought we had reserved it for VRT if the grant came in.
Council member, I believe that was we're looking back at least a year, and so that money has been out there. I believe we may have rebudgeted it already, and we may have to do it again just because it's a multi-year project. So that money has been there for that purpose, and it's still just going to be flowing through unless we can handle it some other way.
And I realize that. I guess I'm just saying that, again, for the public, if, if they see it as unallocated and then we spend it somewhere, even though we know we're going to spend it somewhere, is our way for us to allocate it in the first place so that it's, it doesn't look as if we're just holding it. And maybe I'm reading the chart wrong, but as I read it, it was unallocated, and then it got spent there. Looks like maybe Travis or Eric has a and if I'm misunderstanding, just tell me, but, but I, that it looked funny to me, and I just wondered why we did it that way.
Yeah, I think of the question, council member. Yeah, that money actually was allocated towards VRT in fiscal year '22. It just remained unspent. So
Okay.
It was allocated specifically for that State Street corridor improvement project. And it will be carried forward specifically allocated for that purpose in fiscal year '23 as well.
Okay, thank you. I'll, I'll go back and look again and see where I was messing up. The last thing is that we had a couple of pension fund adjustments, and I don't remember hearing anything about those. And what was the cause of them? And what, going forward, are we going to see more of those?
Council member, my understanding is that is like the unrealized loss, but we have to book it. It is just kind of a balance sheet adjustment, which is an actual expense, but it's not, it's not a loss. It's not cash. But it does affect what's out there being tracked. So again, it's kind of noise in the financial statements, which we, we have for accounting rules, but we don't really.
So it's actually just associated with the unrealized loss and isn't, in effect, isn't real?
Yes. And if you look back a few years, some of these things are reversed. So a couple of years ago, on the interest income, instead of a loss, we had a gain. And that year, we showed a gain, which pumped up our financials, and then we backed it out. So we're always kind of doing the opposite. And this is similar in prior years. There's been a pension gain, which makes things look better. And now it just kind of reverses. So it is due to interest rates and So it is due to interest rates and and market value investments, which again, gets fairly tricky in the accounting realm.
Thank you, that helps.
Thank you.
And now we have Eric with interim budget changes.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor, members of the council. We have eight interim budget changes for your consideration today. Two of them are regular fiscal year 23 changes, and we have six associated with the closeout of fiscal year 2022. The first two are the regular 23 ones. The first one is an airport road improvements project for some improvements out near Galen Road. The increase is associated with contract administration costs and potential change orders. There's an offsetting reduction to the Sky West Apron project, is that project has been canceled. And the budget is therefore no longer required. The second item is for a library summer learning grant. It's a revenue neutral adjustment to support the library's summer learning initiatives. It represents pass-through funds from the Idaho Commission for the Libraries. Moving on to the six interim budget changes associated with the closeout of fiscal year 2022 costs. As Mike mentioned, there were $4.8 million unallocated resources available. The first adjustment is associated with Fire Station 5. That adjustment is primarily driven by continued inflation. We have received bids that which should allow for the construction to commence. Of that adjustment of 600,000, 300,000 is supported through a contribution from CCDC for some site work improvements. The remainder coming from unallocated fiscal year 22 proceeds. The second adjustment is for some website platform upgrades. The underlying platform used to support many of the city's websites is out of date and therefore no longer supported. Placing those websites at risk from inability to recover from instances such as outages. In particular, the library's website is in need of upgrade. This funding provides not only for the library site to be upgraded, but also for a strategic partnership to be entered into to help the city create a migration strategy around other website upgrade projects. Once that strategy is developed, it's anticipated additional funding would be required to complete those upgrades. Our third item is an increase to the Economic Uncertainty Reserve. You'll recall that as part of the 23 adopted budget, city council approved $500,000 for for that purpose. This would add $1,179,000 to that reserve. That Economic Uncertainty Reserve would be available to respond to unanticipated revenue declines or expenditure increases associated with the current economic environment would be especially helpful should we enter into a recession. The fourth item is for FY 24 budget initiatives. This funding basically would be held within our operating contingency and be utilized as part of the fiscal year 24 budget process for one-time initiatives. There were numerous one-time initiatives approved by the city council as part of the fiscal year 23 budget, including the property tax rebate program. It's anticipated these funds would be built into the fiscal year 24 budget and go through a a public process. Our fifth item is associated with 8th Street and the closure of 8th Street between Main and Bannock. The 8th Street Accessibility and Mobility Improvements Report recommended modifications of various intersection treatments, curbs and gutters, pavement markings and materials and other items to improve accessibility, mobility and safety within the corridor. This funding would move us through the first phase of improvements. However, it is anticipated that additional funding would be requested after the technical design analysis and prioritization of improvements is concluded. The last item is $830,000 for various improvements within City Hall. This would allow for various remodels to be completed to address space constraints and optimally use the facility. The impacted departments include human resources, information technology, finance and administration, as well as planning and development services. Work would begin in spring of calendar year 2023 and is anticipated to be concluded in the fall of 2020, 2023. With that, I'd be happy to stand for any questions that the council might have.
It looks like there are none. Thank you, Eric. Yes.
Thank you. I move that we approve the interim budget changes of December 13, 2022 as presented.
Second, you have a motion, a second clerk, we call the roll.
Yes.
Hallie Burton.
Yes.
Sanchez.
Yes.
Widdings.
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries.
And now we have the consent agenda. All items with an asterisk are considered to be routine by the council and will be enacted by one motion. There'll be no separate discussion on these items unless the council member or citizen so requests, in which case the item will be removed from the general order of business and followed in its normal sequence.
Madam Mayor, I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second, you have a motion, a second clerk.
Madam Mayor, before you say that, just a note for folks. We looked at a lot of the resolutions that are on this this morning at our strategic planning session. Some of them are related to expenditure of ARPA funds, some of them related to end of year that we just discussed. Additionally, there are more of our parks resolutions on here to ensure the parks are kept in use in perpetuity.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
In addition to that, I just wanted to call out the airport agreements. I know that airport staff has been working extremely hard to get these agreements in place for the coming years. And those are all reflected in our consent agenda today.
Thank you. Clerk, we call the roll. Flag.
Yes.
Hallie Burton.
Yes.
Sanchez.
Yes.
Widdings.
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries.
And now we'll move into ordinances on first reading.
Madam Mayor, I ask unanimous consent that all ordinances on first reading be read by number entitled only and filed for the second reading calendar.
Without objection.
ORD-57-22, an ordinance amending the solid waste franchise agreement, franchise agreement by and between the city of Boise City, by and through its Public Works Department, the city, and Allied Waste Services of North America LLC, doing business as Republic Services of Boise, Republic Services. Adopting an updated reimbursement rate schedule to increase reimbursement rates paid to Republic Services for solid waste collection and disposal services, providing for a waiver of the reading rules, providing an effective date, and approving a summary of the ordinance.
Thank you. And now we have one on third reading.
Madam Mayor, I move that further reading of ORD 5622 be dispensed with and the record reflected. It has been read for the third time in full.
I can't. We have a motion, a second clerk, will you call the roll? Flag.
Yes.
Hallie Burton.
Yes.
Sanchez.
Yes.
Widdings.
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries. ORD-56-22, an ordinance adopting the Boise Districting Plan, providing a copy of the plan, which includes a map of the Boise City Council seat districts and respective boundaries, providing a copy of the Boise Districting Commission's staff report, which details the process and procedure used to create and certify the Boise Districting Plan, and providing an effective date.
Madam Mayor, I move that ORD 5622 be approved.
Second. We have a motion, a second clerk, we call the roll. Flag.
Yes.
Hallie Burton.
Yes.
Sanchez.
Yes.
Widdings.
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries. All right.
Yes, Madam Mayor, I move that we go into executive session to discuss land acquisition pursuant to Idaho Code 742061C.
Second, the motion. We have a motion, a second clerk, we call the roll. Flag.
Yes.
Hallie Burton.
Yes.
Sanchez.
Yes.
Widdings.
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries.
Thank you.